Okay, it's Monday, May 9th, 2020, 9:00 A.M. Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Keith Johansson Chaplin of the Wilson County Republican Board. Keith?
Shall we pray? Our dearest and kindest Father in heaven above, we're so thankful, Father, for another day of life. We're thankful, Father, that you have created this wonderful universe for us to live in. You provided everything, Father, that we need to survive. But in this country, Father, we go above and beyond survival. Bless us, Father, beyond and above any other country on earth. Father, we are so thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy here. We're thankful, Father, for our system of government. We know, Father, it's not perfect, but it is the best system on earth. Father, we are thankful for each and every one of those, Father, that have been placed in areas of leadership. We pray, Father, for our county commissioners. We pray, Father, for our county judge, for every office, Father, that you have provided for us to lead us and help us, Father, to continue to have the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, we ask a special blessing upon our leaders in Washington. We pray, Father, that you will give them wisdom, that they might make decisions based on your will and not the will of man. Father, we ask a special blessing upon our Supreme Court justices at this time. We pray, Father, for their safety, even though, Father, we are so thankful for the freedom of speech, the freedom, Father, to protest. We pray, Father, that those that are protesting will use good judgment. We pray, Father, you will continue to bless this country in every way, that all of us will recognize our own personal responsibility to make this a better place, that we will look toward our neighbors, to those, Father, that are in need, that we will give them, Father, a hand up when necessary and not wait for someone else to do that. Pray, Father, that you will continue to bless us in our daily walk. We know, Father, that you have left a path for us to follow that will lead to you eternally. We know, Father, that it's through Jesus shed blood that this is possible. And we know, Father, that if we stay on that path, you've promised us that we can live with you and be with you forever. And we're all looking forward to that. And we pray this in his precious name, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Let allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Three, public comments. Okay, we have one vote to comment as of right now. And it is Jillian Bliss of Saguine. We have you down for a public comment. Would you like to make your comment at this time? Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. Yes, everybody in the courtroom can hear you.
Oh, fantastic. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just kind of raised my voice off. I would say Monica De La Cruz.
Okay. Hang on, Ms. Bliss, you're not very clear.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Well, yes, as I mentioned, I recently joined Team Monica De La Cruz. Monica De La Cruz is running to represent you as the citizens of Wilson County in our United States Congress, and she will be on the ballot this November with the goal of representing the very real needs of this community at the federal level, especially in areas such as protecting your personal freedoms and protecting your border. So I wanted to stop by, even just to be able to this morning, as each of you sits here today, of the public service, and Monica and I are very grateful for all you do in serving Wilson County constituents. I look forward to getting to know each of you better, and thank you again for your time this morning.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay. Bye. Is there any other public comments?
No, sir. That's it.
Okay. Public comments, anybody can make a public comment, but Wilson County does not endorse any particular political candidate, Wilson County Commissioners Court. You're allowed to make the public comment, but so, okay. Moving right along to Agenda Item Number Four, Extension Activity Report, the handouts.
Number four, certificate of completion.
Oh, certificates of completion, excuse me, I went to the number five, we'll do that first. Okay, first one, Texas Association of Counties Certificate of Achievement, County Investment Academy. This certifies that Honorable Christina Moot successfully completed the basics of County Investment Course offerings, investment education that satisfies Sections 2256.008 of the Texas Public Funds Investment Act, and demonstrated through understanding of the laws, Texas laws governing the investment of public funds. And the ongoing commitment, this is the ongoing commitment to continuing education provided maximum, to provide maximum benefits to Wilson County issued by the Texas Association of Counties on the 25th day of April, AD 2022. County Investment Academy is a partnership between Texas Association of Counties and McCoy College of Business Administration at the Texas State University, Nathan Paddock and Super. Okay. County Academy, Texas Association of Counties Certificate, of course, completion for 2021 through 2022. Cybersecurity Awareness Training awarded to Judy Fleming, 5/4/2022. This is Certificate of Attendance, presented to Nikki Store for the webinar Broadband Improvements, Free Planning Tools for Libraries, 60 Minutes Event Date, 4/20/2022 Web Junction. Okay, Certificate of Attendance, Early Childhood Investigations Webinars, Vicky Store. Attended a webinar presentation, Your Natural Playscape Makeover, Designing for Outdoor Play on Any Budget by Rusty Kether, 1.5 Hours, April 7th, 2022. Okay, is there anyone?
No, sir. That's it.
Okay, now we're going to the number five, the Extension Activity Handouts, the reports, the handouts. Nobody from the Extension Office is here?
Any new relief on the extension, new, what's that? Of the replacement of?
I have not heard. The last I heard is they were about to end the internal search and put it out to the public. I don't guess anybody. Do you know anything about it?
As far as I know, it's external now.
They never do, did they? Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, moving right along to the item number six, which the Judge Jackson County Judge discussed and take action on the 2022 Mental Health Month Proclamation. Belma and Dunak Moreno, Belma, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Good morning, Honorable Judge and Commissioners Court. As most of y'all know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I appreciate that y'all are giving me the opportunity to read the proclamation on y'all's behalf. So it says, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. On behalf of Commissioners Court and the Honorable Judge Jackson, therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Wilson County, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month in Wilson County. We also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wilson County to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And witness whereof, we have affixed our signatures and seal on this ninth day of May 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to bring it up? Do you want to come up?
Yeah.
Are you going to come up too, Dan?
I'm the chairman of the mental health advisory board.
There you go.
This is a part of my local advisory board here for Wilson County.
I gave her my phone. I'd like to take a picture with those other people.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Riley, that we approve the proclamation. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, and any opposed? Okay. Do we need to get closer?
No, I think this is it.
Okay, there's one more camera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. Before we go any further, for the record, no mention the Commissioner Precinct One, Gary Martin is absent. Okay, now we're moving to Agenda Item Number Seven, which the Judge Jackson County Judge discussed and take action on proceeding with or terminated discussion on tax abatement for Clearford Creek Solar LLC. Okay. At one time, it wasn't getting much attention or whatever, but I know one of the proponents for it is not here. I would suggest we wait till Commissioner Martin gets back. I know that people want to have some discussion. I don't know that it would do any good to have a discussion without him here. And I know Commissioner Wiley is going to be absent next Commissioners Court meeting, so we can reschedule this for the first Commissioners Court meeting in June.
I think it's important that we're all here whenever we do this, because it's a major decision.
Yes.
I agree.
So I'll entertain a motion to table this item until, what is the first Commissioners Court meeting in June?
The 13th.
13th.
Judge, I make a motion that we delay consideration until Commissioners Court on June the 13th.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we table this Agenda item until 13th of June. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back on June.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, which the Judge Jackson County Judge, Michelle Mortar, Grant's Manager, 8A, ratified the grant applications submission and approved resolution of support for the Texas Indigent Commission, Indigent Defense Commission's Supplemental Improvement Grant Program for fiscal year 2023, to create two indigent defense coordinator positions that will serve at Ascoosa-Frio Counties and Wilson-Carnes Counties.
Judge, she had to step out, and she said she would be back in a few minutes, so she asked if we could move forward and then come back to her items.
Okay, well, the next one.
It's also, it's a B and A.
It's B and A.
And she's here.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving to Agenda Item Number Nine, Leanne Hoshack, EMC, 9A, non-standard plant variances, 9A1, 404 Meadow Grove Lane, Precinct Four, F and S Custom Homes LLC, discuss and take action.
Okay, on this one, the property owners own a lot, it's in Wood Valley, off of Meadow Grove Lane, and they are wanting to subdivide it into two smaller lots and build houses on them. And they each will be 1.55 acres. There's currently no structures on the property at this time. They've met all the requirements. Their HOA has given it their approval as well. And the committee gave it a favorable recommendation last Thursday.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the division on 404 Meadow Grove Lane.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Fowles, we approve the division, I guess, of the lot on County Meadow Grove Lane in Wood Valley. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving along to 9A2, 138 Big Oak, Precinct Four, Schumuckle, discuss and take action.
Okay, on this one, the property owner owns lots 19 through 22, and they, their current fence line extends beyond Lot 19 on to Lot 20. They want to sell the remainder acreage and keep Lot 19 where the houses plus the portion of Lot 20 up to their existing fence line. And this one as well has met all the requirements and was given a favorable recommendation by the committee.
How big is that, Lot 20?
They have not surveyed it out yet.
Oh.
They wanted to get approval before they actually survey it out.
Okay, there's nothing on Lot 20, 21, or 22?
No.
So is Lot 19, is that 2.3 acres? Is that right?
Yes.
That's, yes.
And it's including that little piece that there.
So they should be able, because Lot 22 looks like it's a pretty good size.
So the remainder of what they would sell is 6.46 acres.
Okay, but it's divided up into three lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Existing lots.
Would Lot 20 be like more than an acre?
Yes.
Okay.
And it got approval?
Yes, it's got a favorable recommendation from the committee.
Then I make a motion that we approve 138 Big Oak Lane.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Fowles, we approve the, we fight on Big Oak Drive. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now we're moving along to 9A3, 205 Oak Grove, Precinct Three, Room Wall, discuss and take action.
Okay, on this one, the property owner owns five acres, and they want to sell the existing house and along with some acreage. What you see is how they propose to divide it. It has not been surveyed yet. On the remaining acreage that they would retain, they would build a new house that's handicap accessible. The property owner is in a wheelchair, and the existing house is not very accessible, so they want to build a handicap accessible home. They will, they were told to ensure when they survey out the tract one to sell to make sure that it includes all of the septic system and meets the appropriate setback requirements.
So there's still going to be more than 40-foot of?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And this was given a favorable recommendation by the committee as well.
Then I'll make a motion that 205 Oak Grove, Precinct Three, be approved for.
I'll take a motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Fowles, we approve the, the, the Oak Grove. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving to 9A4, 4356 US Highway 181 North, Precinct Two, Richter, discuss and take action.
Okay, this is a variance request. The developer is seeking the four-day flat. This is a development that will be coming in in the next year or so. They are requesting relief from the side utility easements and the front setback. We require a 15-foot utility easement around the perimeter of the lots and a 25-foot setback on the front of the lot that adjoins a public road, and they are requesting to decrease that to 20 feet.
Where's this, okay.
It's off of 181, right past Shannon Ridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're drawing Shannon Ridge.
Ultimately, the back part of it, yeah. The development, they're proposing to have public sewer and public water. They already submitted a discharge permit to PCEQ a couple of months ago, so that's in the process of getting approval, and once they get all that done, then they will be able to submit their actual subdivision application to the county, which would not be until next year.
And what is the variance for, again?
The setback, the front setback, we require 25, and they want to reduce it to 20. And then the side utility easements, we require 15-foot all around, and they want 5-foot on the sides. And they provided letters from both the utility companies that stating that they were okay with that.
Oak Hills and?
Oak Hills and Phelps.
Phelps and Phelps.
Now, they're going to work with Phelps. There are certain lots that they're going to require, still require the 15-foot for, they call them access points for the utilities, but that would be done in the design phase, and they'll work with Phelps on that.
So they're going to build their own sewer plant?
Yes.
How large a subdivision is this?
Over 500 homes. How many homes? Over 500. What size acres? It's going to be about a half acre.
Or smaller.
Yeah. We, this is going to be a unique. This is going to be a pit. Yes, this is going to be a unique subdivision that we've never had before in the county, and I'm very favorable of it, and I hope more of them come like this.
They're also proposing the roads to be, they'd be public roads but privately maintained.
For 20 years, that the county won't have to maintain, curb and sidewalk. We don't have that in the county.
That could be pretty in 20 years.
Yes.
That's 20 years.
And what happens after 20 years? Just out of curiosity. It could, it may still be around. It could fall back to the county or.
That'll be up to discussion.
Exactly, yeah. But at least the county wants to worry about.
During the platting process.
For 20 years.
But they're going to be curb.
Curb, sidewalk.
Curb and sidewalk.
City's St. Street.
They're probably possibly made, right?
Oh, yes.
They're going to be torn ground.
Yep. Yep, it's a pretty unique development that they're talking about doing. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve of the variance for the easements, setback, Richter's Highway 181.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we grant the set, or the?
Utility easement setback.
Utility easement setback, and on the front and sides, I guess it'd be all the way around the lots? Yes. Just the front sides. Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Leanne, what's the name of the subdivision going to be?
Well, right now, they're calling it Richter Ranch, but that doesn't mean that's what the name's going to be.
Okay.
It's Richter Property.
Thank you. Okay. We're going back to Agenda Item Number Eight, which the Judge Jackson County Judge, Michelle Mortar, Grant's Manager, 8A, ratified the grant application submission and approved resolution of support for the Texas Indigent Defense Commission's Supplemental Improvement Grant Program for fiscal year 2023, to create two indigent defense coordinator positions that will serve at Ascoosa-Frio Counties and Wilson-Carnes Counties.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is an effort to address the indigent defense programs that we have going on currently. We have a regional public defender program, and this is kind of molding itself into these two positions, so we had to work quickly, and that's why I'm here to ask you to approve or to ratify the grant application submission, which was, had to be done last Monday. I worked with Edwin Colfax, the director of T O D C, and he assured us that he would do everything he can to help us get going on it. So I worked with Judge Jackson, as well as Judge Hurley, and got the budget where it needed to be and submitted the grant.
Or smaller.
Yeah. We, this is going to be a unique.
This is going to be a pit.
Yes, this is going to be a unique subdivision that we've never had before in the county, and, and I'm very favorable of it, and I hope more of them come like this.
They're also proposing the roads to be, they'd be public roads, but privately maintained.
For twenty years, that the county won't have to maintain. Curved and sidewalk, we don't have that in the county.
That could be pretty in twenty years.
Yes.
That's twenty years.
And what happens after twenty years, just out of curiosity?
It could.
It may still be around.
Yeah, it could fall back to the county or.
That'll be up till discussion.
Exactly, yeah. But at least the county wants to worry about it.
During the platting process.
For twenty years.
But they're going to be curved?
Curved and sidewalk.
Curved and sidewalk. So, probably not, they try.
Oh, yes.
They're going to be torn ground.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty unique development that they're talking about doing. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve of the variance for the easements.
Setback.
Setback. Richter's Highway one eighty-one, morning.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we grant a set, or the.
Utility easement setback.
Utility easement setback, and on front and sides, I guess, all the way around the lots?
Yes.
Just the front sides.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Leanne, what's the name of the subdivision going to be?
Well, right now, they're calling it Richter Ranch, but that doesn't mean that's what the name's going to be.
Okay.
It's, it's Richter Property.
Thank you. Okay. We're going back to Agenda Item Number Eight, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Michelle Mordo, Grants Manager, eight A, ratify the grant application submission and approval resolution of support for the Texas Indigent Defense Commission Supplemental Improvement Grant Program for fiscal year 2023 to create two indigent defense coordinator positions that will serve at Escocia-Frio Counties and Wilson-Carnes Counties.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is an effort to address the indigent defense programs that we have going on currently. We have a regional public defender program, and this is kind of molding itself into these two positions, so we had to work quickly, and that's why I'm here to ask you to approve or to ratify the grant application submission, which was, had to be done last Monday. I worked with Edwin Colfax, the Director of TIDC, and he assured us that he would do everything he can to help us get going on it, so I worked with Judge Jackson, as well as Judge Hurley, and got the budget where it needed to be and submitted the grant application. As part of this, there is a resolution to approve, so I'll go ahead and read that as well.
Before you, before you read, I just want to make, okay, this is for an indigent defense coordinator. We will be sharing an indigent defense coordinator with Carnes County, and at Escosa will be sharing an indigent defense coordinator with Frio Counties, and it's for both of those. The reason Michelle got to do both of them is because they are working on the main grant for the Regional Public Defender's Office, so if they ask if we could do that one, they not volunteer Michelle's services. So, that's the reason we're doing the one also for at Escosa and Frio, and we're including Carnes with ours. We'll be sharing one, they'll be doing, so.
And TIDC will be working with us to kind of get it separated on who's supposed to do what. We just needed to move quickly on getting the application in, so that we would be considered in June for their technical committee, which they go over these applications at that point to fund for FY twenty-three.
Okay.
So, here is the resolution of support. Required resolution of the County of Wilson authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Texas Indigent Defense Commission for Defense, Indigent Defense Coordinators as part of TIDC's Supplemental Improvement Grant Program, authorizing Richard L. Jackson County Judge to act on behalf of the County of Wilson in all matter related to the application, and pledging that if a grant is received, the County of Wilson will comply with the grant requirements of Texas Government Code, Section seventy-nine, point zero three seven and Title One of the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter one seventy-three. Whereas, under the provisions of Texas Government Code, Section seventy-nine, point zero three seven and Title One of the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter one seventy-three, counties are eligible to receive grants from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to provide improvements in indigent defense services in the county. And whereas, the Commissioners Court authorizes its grant program and application to assist the county in the implementation and the improvement of the indigent defense criminal services in this county. And whereas, the Wilson County Commissioners Court has agreed that in the event of loss or misuse of the funds, the Wilson County Commissioners assures that the funds will be returned in full to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Now therefore be it resolved in order by the County of Wilson in Florisville, Texas, that Richard L. Jackson County Judge is the authorized official designated by the Commissioners Court of this county to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Indigent Defense Improvement Grant Program and all other necessary documents to accept said grant. And be it further resolved, that the official designated by the Commissioners Court is designated as the Program Director for this grant and the County Auditor or County Treasurer. If the county does not have an auditor, per TAC, Texas Administrative Code, Section one seventy-three, point three oh one A, is designated as the Financial Officer for this grant. Passed and approved by the Commissioners Court of Wilson County in Florisville, Texas on the ninth day of May twenty twenty-two.
Judge, I'll make a motion that we approve, and I'm not going to read all of that, but that we approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the grant for the Indigent Defense Coordinators for Wilson and Carnes at Escosa-Frio. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Which one do I sign?
Both, two copies, one for Eva and one is for my records.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now we're going to eight B, discuss and approve the grant application for the Max and Victoria Dreyfus Foundation to fund a memory care program for the Wilson County Public Libraries.
This is another attempt to fund some more programming. The Wilson County Public Libraries does not have a dedicated programming budget, so they have to fundraise, as well as go out for grants. This is a foundation grant. This was founded, or this was found by the Public Libraries, and we're taking another stab at trying to fund a memory care program for this area that would help patients, elders who deal with dementia and Alzheimer's disease, and hopefully we can get started.
What, you know, Nikki's not here, so I don't know. What, what would it do? What?
Well, the program would provide funding to buy certain kinds of activities, games, sensory tools, sensory activities for dementia and Alzheimer's patients. The program would also obviously be administered, administered by the Wilson County Public Libraries, and they're, they're trying to develop a memory care resource lab, so to speak, at the library, but as well as go out to the different nursing facilities and assisted facilities within the county and, and serve the memory care patients there as well. So, it's, it's just to keep them active in, in the appropriate activities that they need, as well as provide resources for their caregivers, because dementia and memory care is pretty difficult where they're.
Is that a match-in?
No, it would, it would not be match-in. It would be all totally funded. They're asking for, the Public Libraries is asking for three thousand dollars, so that's what this grant would be for.
Too late, we already voted on yours. Your turn.
Did you? Seriously?
Seriously.
Awesome.
But you're okay.
I'll make a motion, Judge, that we approve the application for the Victoria Dreyfus Foundation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the grant application for the Max and Victoria Dreyfus Foundation to fund a memory care program. Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to TM.
He called, he called me this morning, he's under the weather, but he recommended that we keep.
Hang on one second, let me get that. Edwin Baker, Public Health and Safety, lift burn ban, discuss and approve.
He called me this morning and said that he's going to be under the weather. He couldn't make it, but he recommended we keep the burn ban effective. So, I'll make a motion that we continue the burn ban.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Wiley, that we continue the burn ban. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we even have to do that? Because I thought it went for like ninety days.
You said we had to, so I don't think.
You said it was going to be expired.
Oh, okay, I thought, I didn't, I thought we'd done, just done it not long ago.
Yes.
My, I have time flies and we haven't thought.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eleven, Eva S. Martinez, County Clerk, minutes.
Yes, sir, I have handed them up, and they have been properly prepared.
I have reviewed the set I have, and I see no problem, Judge. Make a motion that we approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mark, excuse me, Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the minutes for April the eleventh and April the twenty-fifth. Is there any more discussion, changes, deletions, additions, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
By the way, when you call me Commissioner Martin, it's the best he's looked in a long time.
Uh, yes. I hope he doesn't get lost. I wonder how well he blends in after.
It was different when I went up there for that. You're walking eight blocks to get on a subway, to fly across, it's just full of people to get up and walk another eight blocks to where you want to go.
No, thank you. Count me out. Haven't lost a thing up there.
No. I did lose something.
You're not going back. Okay, Agenda Item Twelve, Jalen T. Bodderford, Human Resource General and Specialists, favor on the personnel changes.
Good morning. Colton Hart was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making sixteen oh three per hour of thirty-five thousand dollars annually effective May second. Edgar Alcala was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making sixteen oh three per hour of thirty-five thousand dollars annually effective May second. And Dalia Hernandez was hired as a part-time library clerk for the library, making fourteen forty-two per hour effective May fifth.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Yes. Nobody quit? No, that's a good thing, if you want to leave, so that, okay. There's no, I have no faith, that's just informational. So, we're going to Agenda Item Thirteen, Brendan Trevino, County Auditor.
All right, I've got bills for you in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Oh.
Oh. The payment for one of the dump trucks is in here, four hundred and twenty thousand, that's for that. And we had a lot of material, this road material, this go-around. Did I not give? I'm sorry.
Uh-oh. I didn't see this. We'll have to go back.
Uh, Bon-Tex, I think, except for like seventy-seven thousand for this go-around, so.
second phase of, of projects that we have approved. I turned, I did one, and now I'm working, working on the second one.
The tech stop project?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can't say for sure, but I don't think we, we haven't spent thirty-two thousand on any, any one single road.
Okay.
We have been, other than my final tech stop project.
Uh, before you leave, if we want to go look at those invoices to verify, so that way Amanda makes sure that she.
They were supposed to.
If she, okay, and it may very well be.
Yeah, they were supposed to send an invoice for.
Just for that.
All that together.
Okay.
List is kind of wrote forty K.
Okay. The newest one?
Me. Okay. It doesn't, doesn't have your identification.
Both mine were broken down first month of hell.
Oh, God.
Not so bad. Mine was a week.
It what?
Is this all working?
Mine was, mine was down for a month and a half trying to find anything to get it fixed. I'll be darned. Had to replace the whole hybronic cylinder.
I'll make a motion, Judge, that we approve the bill. Second. Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Perdola, we approve the bill. Is there any changes, additions, deletions, anything like that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we need to revisit Agenda Item Number Four, certificates of completion awards, because there was two under the pile here, and I didn't see. County Academy Certificate, certificate of course completion for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two cybersecurity awareness training awarded to Jenna B. Martinez and Gary Martin, one of them's five three and one of them's five four, twenty twenty-two. Okay. Back to this, next Agenda Item is Agenda Item Number Fourteen at nine forty-six. We're adjourned.